Take a look what's down there. Again, we've done some pretty in-depth, not full assessments, but we've done some study down there. We think that we can keep all of the grading, all of the drainage in compliance. So, keep it out of wetlands. There's no other real environmental considerations on that end. Still have to check the box, submit it to Georgia DOT and they have to act in their approval capacity for that. So that would take about a year, getting into design fiscal year seventeen and phasing that construction in fiscal year seventeen and eighteen. Not only because of the cost of the project, but also because of the magnitude of construction. So, phase it in two years. Grading and paving one year, or, excuse me, grading and drainage one year, paving and lighting in the second year. So, reduces the capital outlay for Georgia DOT as well as for the county. It makes it much more easier to manage for the scale of project for this airport. The next high point is the terminal building. If y'all have been out there, you know there is a very lovely, quaint rustic terminal building. I certainly love it. I would love for it to be picked up and moved and added on to, though we certainly don't think that's feasible in any capacity. So relocating that terminal to more advantageous real estate midfield, it's right here now, sort of on the east quarter, we'll call this the east quarter of the airfield. It'd be relocated, most likely somewhere in the midfield area.
Would you leave the current building there?
No, yeah, it would go away. And there's some creative ways, we can think, to preserve parts or some of it. I can't necessarily speak to those at the moment because that would take more of a creative and specialty type of technical folks. But it's prime real estate.
That's two restaurants.
It is, this area really, as the airport continues to grow and, you know, folks continue to be here, and as the community certainly continues to support the airport in other ways and attracting corporate users, special events, anything like that, this is really prime real estate for additional hangar development, some other revenue-producing development as it is there now. So that would be the expectation, that long-term, that building would go away and there would potentially be additional apron space, additional hangars, something like that, that's more compatible with that space there, so close to the airfield. That is shown in design in 2018 and construction in 2019. The rest of the capital improvement program is really focused on maintenance. Certainly, it's great to have the very exciting, lovely projects to speak about, but you want to preserve what you have as well, because that's super important to safety and to operational capability. So, continuing on with the pavement maintenance, making sure that all of the paved areas are in great shape going forward, as well as items like your field fencing. There's not security or wildlife issues at the moment, but we know that we want to keep those items in mind, so that we're ready to act when, so the larger projects are out of the way. And again, continuing hangar development as the demand really warrants, as folks are coming in saying we need some hangar space, or as you're seeing more and more folks request it and be put on a waiting list. Again, those are flexible, demand-based sorts of projects. Certainly, if any questions, commentary?
Just for the citizens here who don't have the advantage of looking at this plan, the total improvements and everything we're talking about here over a five, well, six-year accounting this current year, period is a little over nine billion dollars, of which the county will pay a little bit less than 1.2 million.
And that's the five-year totals, because this will be for the next fiscal year. Looking at the six-year, including this fiscal year, some of those costs from this fiscal year are planned to be ringing off of federal funds in future years, but it would be approximately 15 million total, with about 3 million local, the rest coming from state funds. And if I may mention, the state funding situation has increased dramatically in the last legislative session, last spring. The state Airport Aid Program stands to benefit for 20-plus, on the plus, 20 million dollars or so. This was part of House Bill 170 that was passed last legislative session. And as long as that stands through the next one, without any major opposition from significantly larger airports and huge airlines that are present in the state, it's going to be a huge bid to general aviation airports and smaller commercial service airports throughout the state, in terms of what the state can provide. So airports and communities aren't as reliant on federal funds to support their projects. So some of these projects are certainly looking to take advantages of some of those funds in the next five years.
Thank you, Amanda. Any question, any additional questions, Amanda? All right, and I will ask for a motion to approve this CIP, your CIP.
Ready for approval?
One second. Motion in a second, any other discussion? All in favor, say if I raise my hand. Motion carries. All right, the next item is the Airport Hangar Development Area Contract Modification Number One.
Methill can speak to that as well. I did send you a set of bullet points from Chuck Mayfield, the final engineering, explaining the advantages of using the standing seam versus the screw-down type roof, but Amanda could speak fluently on that as well. If you don't have, I have copies of those bullet points if you want them, but they were emailed.
I don't know that I speak to a roof, but in this...
You told me it was your idea.
In this consideration, for the three hangar, of the three hangars that are currently under design, getting ready for construction, these are located here in blue. One is the T-hanger that'll have ten single-engine propeller aircraft. That's not what we're talking about.
It's Jumbo-T, it's actually, we have Pupless Twins and they're already signed up.
Okay, asking correctly. Small aircraft, not necessarily corporate business jet-type aircraft. We're not talking about the improved roof section for that hanger. We're talking about the two 100 by 100 hangers, 10,000 square foot hangers. One of those is for general aviation business, Ben Baker's Aeronautics, one of those maintenance. The advantage of this roof system versus a screw-down metal roof is exactly that. There are exposed fasteners, screws that can rust, seals that can eventually wear and leak, so the long-term maintenance is significantly higher than a standing seam roof, which has no exposed fasteners, and in my opinion, certainly more architectural, visually appealing. That's not the huge part of it. The long-term maintenance, the 30-year warranty without maintenance, without leaking on any of your tenants, without having to constantly be in there making sure that it's in good repair, is, in all applications I've ever seen, worth the increased cost.
Well, and one of the reasons that we're looking at the big hangars is because the amount of metal that's there, and the heating and cooling and the contraction that you get in a piece of metal of that size versus the smaller hanger, is much more significant. I was sharing with Amanda earlier today that when I was in Lowe's on Sunday, I noticed all the five-gallon buckets on the floor for where the roof is leaking, and I looked up, and it was not a standing seam roof, it was a lot of screws, and I went, aha! I had an aha moment. And I think Commissioner Woods also has had some experience with those screw-down roofs.
I have a question. I understand that the same roof won't be done. We had a call meeting on October the 2nd and approved contracts on these hangers. The date of this project, the contract modification, is October the 13th. Why was this not addressed before and with the bid submission?
That was certainly my oversight. We provided the contractors that were providing bids, it was called a performance specification, and it was a laundry list of all of the things that were required for the building, required for the foundation, and all of the associated components. In the roof section, it was, yeah, simply a mistake, it was overlooked. The specification called for standing seam, or called for a screw-down metal roof, and it should have been a screw-down metal roof with an add-alternate that was bid in conjunction for standing seam. So once we called it...
I guess my problem is, I have a problem with approving a bid on the 2nd of October and then having another modification to that bid 11 days later. That bothers me.
I understand. That was a grave mistake.
Is there anybody else double-check what anybody does on modifications? I mean, does, it bothers me. I don't think it looks right.
I agree. It's embarrassing. It's not the way we prefer to operate. Certainly, our attention with bringing that contract before the board on the 2nd was because of the time constraints on having that T-hanger in place, constructed and ready for operation by the beginning of the year. So, holding that any longer and providing a contract that was comprehensive would be losing us two weeks. Again, I'm not, I'm taking responsibility for it, and I agree that it was an oversight that should have been called by not just me, but three other people that reviewed the performance specification.
Should have been called by somebody. Are there any circumstances under which the other roof is, that was originally proposed, is preferable?
I mean, cost. Cost only, the long-term cost, and I don't have numbers from any founder.
I'm just asking the reason for it, because I think it'd be up to us to want to cut costs on something, but it has to do with, you know, the long-term and for the cost saving. Is there a reason we're not proposing the same preferable roof on the Jumbo-T hanger or any other hangers we currently have? Do we have issues we need to go ahead and look at any of those?
I don't think so. Again, Mr. Gray mentioned the size and the span of those hangers, the construction is a little bit different. So the clear span of 100 feet is very different than the 60 by 200 feet in the way that the roof is structured and constructed. Makes the, the smaller hangers, the T-hangers, makes it less susceptible to that sort of wear and deterioration. So, you know, if the cost was no object, certainly it would be preferable, but it's not as much a consideration for the long-term maintenance costs as the larger span hangers.
$53,000 to miss. A bit much, but...
The warranty on those is still yours.
What's the warranty on the curtains?
10.
What?
10.
Do we have any issue with the car hangers with the roof?
Nothing I'm aware of, but they're fairly new. But I did talk to a reputable contractor at the county that does a lot of metal buildings, and they said, yeah, if you want long warranty, you're going to have to go with standing seam because you're not going to get it screw-down.
You still want to be cutting on a roof on the Jumbo-T that we have a shorter warranty on, and it's going to end up costing the county more in the long run. It's just...
Structurally, they're different.
Well, I mean, I understand, but...
I have a much higher comfort level with the screw-down roof on the Jumbo-Ts than I do want something that's that big and that tall. We can, the worst comes to worst, we can get somebody up on top of the Jumbo-Ts and do some repairs. Trying to get to do repairs on a hanger of that size is a whole nother ballgame.
A lot of screws with $53,000.
Yep. One individual fall off the roof, the million dollars lawsuit is...
Is this something on the screw-down roofs that we can repair ourselves, the county can?
I have a certain level of comfort with it on the Jumbo-Ts because they're just not that tall. You've seen them.
Yeah, I was just wanting you, that we've got people in-house that will be able to handle that procedurally.
Procedurally, yeah.
Action repairs are relatively straightforward. I will say, that's what I'll work in with airports around the state and southeast. The anecdotal evidence certainly says that the T-hanger types, you know, they work well. And then, like I said, the patching repair is much more straightforward for airport sponsors than the larger span hangers. And the types of, this may or may not be fair to say necessarily, but the types of users that are in the larger hangers with the types of amenities that are in the larger hangers, it lends themselves to more difficulty in repairing those if there's leakage, if there's damage.
What you're saying is you don't have a roof leaking on a $15 million aircraft?
I mean, they made this in sustainable weather, at 30,000 feet away.
Yeah, it's not so much that as the clients that own the aircraft getting rained on when they are walking to their aircraft.
Plenty should be all right in the weather.
Go ahead.
I would know if there'd have been a petition.
Any other questions at this point in time?
No, I have...
All right, now we entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion, I will approve the contract modification number one.
One second.
Motion in a second. Additional discussion or questions? All in favor, please see if I raise my hand. Close. Next is the Hazard Mitigation Plan Update Resolution. We have Katie Westbrook here, who's consulting, who's drafted this update, and can respond to any questions that we may have?
And just in case that name sounds familiar to you, the Westbrook name is, Ed Westbrook was our district board, EMA, or GEMA represented for several years, and she happens to be his daughter-in-law, seems to run in the family. Her husband teaches at Kennesaw State Emergency Management as well.
He's the deputy director.
Yeah, so it's kind of like a family deal, or you like adrenaline or something, I don't know.
FEMA requires every five years that the Hazard Information Plan for each county is updated. The plan that is in place now has been approved by FEMA and has been approved by the Georgia Emergency Management Agency. I just like you to know that there were two major changes from the 2010 plan to the 2015 plan. Transportation incidents was included in the technological hazards. While FEMA doesn't really, while FEMA only focuses on the natural hazards in your list, the committee, over six meetings, determined that the list for Harris County, thunderstorms, tornadoes, winter storm weather, flooding, drought, wildfire, and earthquakes, those were the top natural hazards that were addressed and looked at. FEMA doesn't really look at the technological hazards, however, I do feel like it behooves the county to address these issues, and those were determined to be hazardous material incidents, dam failure, transportation incident, and terrorism. Transportation incident and terrorism, one of the two new ones, added from the last plan to this plan. As I stated, over six, the course of six meetings, departments from Harris County's government and other organizations participated in the update of this plan.
And this is, this is a federal requirement, and I believe it's a federal requirement to receive post-disaster aid, right?
Yes, sir. There are actually two reasons to adopt the plan, not that there's a carrot, a big carrot dangling. It's that if a disaster hits, if the plan is not in place, and the emergency operations plan, which is another plan in the Emergency Management Agency, if both of those plans are not approved, the county cannot receive any assistance post-disaster. Basically, FEMA will turn away and say, you know, do what we want, and we're not going to help you out. That's just what, how it is.
That's the plan on care.
This is, these are all the working documents I wanted you to see, that this is, that's how we got to the end of the plan. It wasn't that I just sat up in the office and pulled things out of nowhere. This was a committee-driven plan. The committee did give the information, and it was all documented. The other reason, the other big carrot is that if the plan's not in place, you won't be able to apply for any federal funding. It's not just within the emergency management realm, but that's how it works. Living or anything like that, just you're automatically ineligible.
You mentioned a lot of different types of disasters. Most of those, it's something that you can do to try to fix those. One of those, you mentioned, is drought.
Yes, sir.
What can we do for those?
I would have to look back in the plans to specifically answer that question. I do know that there are mitigation strategies, and there, FEMA requires that there are two mitigation strategies. That's how can we lessen the burden of that hazard on the county? There are two mitigation strategies for each of the hazards addressed. So there, I know for sure that there are some in there.
Maybe Calvaro watered the county.
No, in the event of a drought, something like, and I don't quote me that this is in there, like getting water buffaloes or having water buffaloes on standby so that the community would have enough drinking water in the event.
Well, they, they, they will help us farmers, so...
If there are anything, one piece of the plan that is relatively new that FEMA is really harping on is how is the plan being maintained? Yes, it has to be done every five years, but how is the county maintaining? So I'm agreed with Monty Davis to come back annually and reconvene that board, and anything that needs to be added, I will add into the plan and then resubmit it to GEMA for GEMA to make their approval, and it will go to FEMA. We'll keep that on an annual basis, just so that anything that comes up, anything that you can think of that needs to be put in the plan as far as a mitigation strategy, or anything that will lessen the burden of any of these hazards on the county, I will gladly put that in the plan and then put amendments to the plan and send it from GEMA to the board.
She did utilize some methods that we might want to think about giving people to meetings, so she did bribe people with food and door prices, but... Did you want anything? See even anyone?
All right.
If you want a copy of the plan, which is quite lengthy, I can make you...
Well, it's actually about double the size, because I think it was 110 before, went to 253, I think, don't quote me on that, but...
There's the Community Wildfire Protection Plan, which is in there, and that lengthens it a good bit, but as far as the plan without the appendix, it's a manageable read, but it is quite, still quite lengthy.
I've read it all.
We have a resolution that we need to pass tonight. If there are no other questions with Katie, then I will entertain a motion. We will be on...
One second.
Motion in a second, any further discussion?
I'd like to set for the record how much we appreciate the hard work that some of the members of our county, employees and others, the time, the effort. In reading the document, there was a tremendous amount of work, and we appreciate it.
Well, just to dovetail into that, Commissioner, and Andy, other volunteer firefighters who were there on their own time, on their own dime, so, it just ties into the resolution you passed earlier today. A lot of people put some effort into it, and all they got was the door closing.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say if I raise my hand. Motion carries. Next is the Community Center Fee Revision. This was, if you're ready with this, at our retreat, we did have some discussion on these items, and some changes were made to it after that, and this is presented to you tonight for adoption.
Mr. Chairman, the only one change that was made was so that the pool after hours usage would match the gym after hours usage. We changed the gym so that it would be not be on 10:00 p.m., but we accidentally, the pool, we had discussed the pool being allowed to be three hours, which will make it to 11:00 p.m. The majority is in favor of changing it so that they're consistent.
All right.
And is the two-hour ban going to be shown here?
For the pool area after hours, one hour, not be on 10:00 p.m., so it'll be two hours.
All right, entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Motion in a second, any discussion? All in favor, see if I raise my hand. Motion carries. All right, the next item is formal action apparently has never been taken to appoint Charles Ragsdale to the Recreation Board as the liaison for the Board of Education. It's designed by, or it's defined in the Recreation Biels as being an ex officio non-voting member position. Mr. Ragsdale has been carrying out this for a number of years.
Yes, yes.
And he is a faithful member there, so we're just trying to make right an oversight. We entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion that this board approves Charles Ragsdale to the Recreation Board as the liaison for Board of Education.
Second. Motion in a second, any discussion? All in favor, see if I raise my hand. Motion carries. Next item is the Audit Proposal from Robinson Grimes and company, our auditors. Greg, I guess, you know, we'll turn this over to you.
Well, they've been our auditors for a long time, and I think we have a certain level of comfort with them. Paul, as we make, is still getting his feet on the ground. He realizes that we need to go forward for at least another year in this situation, but he would like to review it. So, rather than the three-year extension, he's recommended that we go with the one-year extension at a fee of $49,000, and I agree with that recommendation and recommend that to the board.
Has Robinson Grimes been contacted that they would accept just a one?
They have, they have the opportunity, it's, they have the choice of one or three years, it's in the leg.
I have a question. How does the $49,000 compare with what we've been paying?
I have that, I requested that from Paul. In 2014, well, last year, the year before, it was significantly higher because of the additional work they had to do. But before that, starting in '09, the amount was $36,450, and '10, the same $36,450. In '11, it was $35,000, next $37,41,500, and I don't know what the base amount was for '14 and '15, but basically, the base amount from '13 to '16 jumped from $41,500 to $49,000.
And there are some new GATSU regulations that have kicked in there that are causing additional requirements that have occurred since then, which is the...
Since then, what it means since when?
Since the, I think you, last, fix the amount you quoted.
Okay, 14, okay.
I think it's GATSU 54, don't quote me, but I don't know, it's been, it's been getting more and more tedious, I guess, to do the audit, for lack of a better term.
Is there anything we can do to keep the cost maybe lower? It seems that even when the county was stagnant...
Paul is working on that. There's a lot of things that he's going to be doing that weren't done by the previous person, just because they were not...
But will that just keep it at this amount, or is there a way to do an overage?
That's his goal for, for only doing one year, to see if we can't get those costs down going forward. And hopefully, they charge us, if there's an overage, they charge us hopefully, but we shouldn't have any overages this year. We'll go down on the time, the bill time. Does that only charge us for actual time?
So this is a cast and stone of $49,000?
Uh, nasty, I think it is, okay.
It looks like it is.
Usually they don't go down, usually they only go up, but...
Now we entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion that we approved one year onward, Robinson Grimes.
In a second, I'll say, motion in a second, any discussion? All in favor, see if I raise my hand.
That, I'll make the type of motion that we look at it, 4% and 5%, I believe it's the next year, we look at that and consider... We look at that and consider, you know, that's a little bit higher than in the world that you're dealing with. Everybody else is dealing with one and two.
That's why we're only going for one year.
Okay. Any other comments or discussion? All in favor, say if you raise your hand. Motion carries. All right, Tim, the next one is we were required to submit a new application for what has been known as the Gateway Grant. It's now called the Roadside Enhancement and Beautification Council Grant. Greg, let's see.
What this grant is for is the two entrances at the Business Park that are on State Road 103. For State Road 103, are eligible for this grant. We've been working for some time to, we worked with Ernest Coon, who's a well-known native plant propagator. Probably one of the, if you recall, when we had Vince Dooley at the Chamber Dinner, that was through Ernest, who had actually helped him develop the Dooley Azalea. So he's very well-respected and has developed a good plan for us that will provide plants that are native to southwest Georgia or middle Georgia that should do very well with, once they get established, the minimum maintenance and look good, provide color all year long. Part of this is also, we have to provide a maintenance program for that. We're in negotiations right now to, rather than, we've talked in the past about getting, I'm going a little astray, but let me tell you how we're going to maintain it, if we're going to plant it. The, we had talked about getting another prison crew to help maintain that area up there. West Point has come to the table and said, "Listen, we can do it cheaper than you can, than hiring a whole other crew." And we're right there, so at some point in time, we will bring probably a contract with City West Point to not just maintain that area once, assuming we get the grant, and I think we will, I think it's a strong grant, but to maintain the whole Business Park. It was rather, it was, it's just too far up there. Our crews don't get up there as often as they should. It's rather West Point's backyard, so I think that's probably going to be win-win for both of us. But this, basically, this is, should be a showpiece for the county with the international focus that comes through there, and it's not, it's the nicest way. And this will provide, and it also will provide a model for when we develop other areas that we can mirror off this for other entrances so they're consistent. So you know every time that you're coming into an entrance at the Roadside Business Park that it's consistent. They'll ask if it's consistent. You'll know you're at the destination.
Do we have any idea what kind of annual cost makes in this we're looking at?
About $8,000 if we do annual planting.
How much will we get in the grant?
I'm going for $47,000.
That'd be for the initial planning, health, maintenance?
Correct.
So just a one-shot deal?
Yeah, they don't provide a maintenance thing.
Do you think that covers 100% of the anticipated cost for the initial planning?
I've got a little bit in there for the county about, because they will only do up to 10% irrigation. I'm thinking it's like $5,400 to the county, cost match. So about a five to one, a five to one ratio, 10 to 1 ratio.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve County Manager's proceeding with application for grants. Motion, do I have second?
I'll second.
Discussion. All in favor, say if you raise your hand. Motion carries.
County attorney needs to sign a book for you.
All right, is that all, Greg? Under yours?
That is it, sir.
All right. Jeff, do you have anything?
I do not, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your attention tonight. It's always a pleasure to have you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, I ask for an executive session.
If anyone would like it, then-
I'd like to have an executive session for the purpose to discuss personnel, please.
Okay, executive session for personnel. That's, that's next to the motion. Do I have second? Second, all in favor? Or is there any other reason, by the way, before we do that? Okay. All in favor, say if you raise your hand. All right. I think I want very hard to say, even in fact, the Gateway Grant is about to be approved by a field roadside enhancement and beautification council.